All right, it is 6:30. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Days?
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway? Councilmember Fitch? Councilmember Webb? Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Tracus?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First of all, I want to warmly welcome Councilwoman Shalonda Webb from the 4th District to our meeting tonight. I'm looking forward to working with you, Councilwoman. And I also want to recognize Councilwoman Kelly Dunaway, who was sworn into a full term this morning, as well as Councilman Tracus, who was sworn into his second term this morning. So congratulations to everyone. And now, on a more somber note, in light of last week's riotous mob on our nation's capital, now known as an insurrection, I ask us all to take a moment of silence to reflect on the five lives lost, the dozens injured, as well as to reflect on why we serve and on the sacrifices made by those who protect our democracy. Please join me for this moment of silence. Thank you. I will now ask for a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of January 5, 2021.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. The January 5, 2021 Journal is approved. Since our last meeting, we learned about a new federal relief program to provide for emergency housing rental and utilities assistance from the U.S. Treasury. As you all know, this comes at a crucial time when more and more face the threat of becoming unhoused or housing insecure, and landlords are losing important income streams. New data that we all just received from the United Way shortly before the meeting shows that housing and utilities assistance are the top two requests from the United Way 211 hotline. That's why I'm actually asking now, before we proceed with our agenda tonight, for the council to suspend the rules so that we can introduce, perfect, and pass legislation that allows us to apply for this new federal grant opportunity, all in time to meet an 11:00 p.m. tonight deadline. This will require unanimous support to move through to final passage tonight.
Madam Chair, I move to suspend the rules in order to request, introduce, perfect, and finally pass Bill Number 19, an emergency ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
You're on to you.
Madam Chair. Moving to other communications, item number 10, all districts.
Receive file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. Madam Clerk, please read Bill Number 19 for introduction.
Yes, ma'am. Bill Number 19, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an emergency ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an agreement with the United States Department of the Treasury pertaining to acceptance of an Emergency Rental Assistance, ERA Program Grant, and declaring an emergency.
I move to advance Bill Number 19 to the perfection order of business. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 19 is advanced to the perfection order of business.
Shall I read the bill for perfection?
Yes.
Bill Number 19, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 19.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 19 is perfected. I now move to advance Bill Number 19 to take up on the final passage order of business. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 19 is advanced to the final passage order of business.
Madam Chair, shall I read the bill for final passage?
Please proceed, Madam Clerk.
Bill Number 19, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 19. Is there a second?
Second.
Days.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days? Councilmember Dunaway?
Will we have our buttons here?
You won't have your buttons on this one.
We will not?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway, thank you. Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 19, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 19 is finally passed. Thank you, everyone, for working together on this tonight. We will get the application in shortly, and I do expect the county executive to come back to us and do time with the request for appropriation.
Madam Chair, do we need to adopt an emergency clause for this?
That was part of the legislation.
Okay.
It was adopted.
Thank you.
All right, moving on.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Fitch?
I ask for a opportunity to put a motion to suspend the rules on this agenda for this evening. As you noticed last week, we put you on notice, several of us, that we would be moving this week to rescind the vote last week for chair and vice chair. That's what this motion is for. However, before adoption and a reading of the resolution, I would like to have you consider, as the chair and the vice chair from last week, in order to give a voice to the people of District 4 and respect our newly-elected Councilwoman Shalonda Webb, an opportunity to step down voluntarily so we do not have to go through this process. So I wondered if you would address that, Madam Chair.
Councilman Fitch, we addressed this matter at last meeting, and we have selected our vice, our chair and vice chair for 2021. And so that decision has, will remain. Have you?
Okay.
Are you putting forth your motion? Did you do that?
In just a moment.
Okay.
So, Madam Clerk, please read the resolution.
And this should be resolution number... Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Apologies for the interruption. However, I believe that we need a motion to suspend...
That's right.
Does that need to come prior to reading the resolution?
Yes, I believe so.
So I make a motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of adopting a resolution regarding election of council officers for 2021.
Second.
Harder.
Councilman Fitch, can you state your resolution again, or your motion again, because it is different than what it reads in the red line? And I want to make sure we are clear on what your motion is.
Moving to suspend the rules for the purpose of adopting a resolution regarding election of council officers. That's what I have on my red line.
Okay, mine says "and" for selecting a county council chair and vice chair for 2021.
That's correct. That is exactly what we're doing.
Okay, so that is part of your motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay. The motion as it stands, Councilman, is out of order. As I stated and not recognized, we elected a chair and a vice chair at last week's meeting, and our charter, our rules, and Roberts' rules do not provide a legal pathway to redo that decision. If you would like to proceed with your resolution, you may, but you will need to remove that, remove the piece about electing a chair and vice chair from your motion.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
The resolution only...
I'd like to invoke rule 14.
Second on that. Please take the roll.
There is not a motion that is recognized, Councilman Fitch.
You have to recognize it. It's in Roberts' rules and the council rules. Go look up Rule 14. There's two members that objected to your ignoring the motion. Rule 14 allows two members to object, and you're required to take a vote.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Tracus.
May I suggest that we recess for you to confer with the county counselor concerning Councilman Fitch's assertion and interpretation of the rule, please?
I would entertain a motion to recess and... Okay, and we will reconvene in 15 minutes.
You have to take a vote.
I think we have to vote on that, Madam Chair.
Yes, but I also have to be clear on the motion at what point we will reconvene. So I will state the full motion. We will recess for 15 minutes, and my motion is to recess for 15 minutes and to reconvene at 6:57. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Those opposed? No, roll call, please.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days? Councilmember Days?
No.
Councilmember Dunaway? Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Webb?
No.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Madam Chair, on the motion to take a recess for 15 minutes and reconvene at 6:57, there are four noes and three ayes.
Okay, the motion has failed.
Madam Clerk, please read the resolution.
We, Councilman Fitch, again, we have to move forward with a motion. Your motion as it stands cannot, is not recognized. We did not read the resolution prior to the motion.
Okay, I'll restate the motion for a second time, that we suspend the rules for the purpose of adopting a resolution for the election of council officers and for a selection of county council chair and vice chair for 2021.
Councilman Fitch, again, I appreciate your concerns. We've heard them for weeks. You've been sharing them for weeks, but a motion to reselect a chair and vice chair is not in order. We will make sure the Journal captures your statement. For now, though, we need to proceed with our discussion tonight.
This is a point of order, Madam Chair.
Please state your point of order.
Rule 14, the chair decides questions of order, or two members can appeal the ruling of the chair on a point of order. And that is what is in front of us at this particular point. We are appealing the ruling of the chair.
You cannot ignore the vote.
Again, the motion is illegal, and I would like to, I would like for the county counselor to share her findings on this with us.
I don't think you understand. She cannot share a legal opinion with us publicly. We heard that last week.
She can tell us what's in order.
You have a motion on the floor and a second, so you have to react to the motion. The motion and a second, you have to react to that. You cannot ignore it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
As a parliamentary point of order, what they're asking for is to invoke Rule 14. If that is so invoked, they can have the vote. However, the, what they're asking to vote on, or Councilman Fitch is asking to vote on, is not a valid motion. It is not legal. Therefore, they can have the vote. However, the opinion will be the same. It is not a legal motion.
So they could vote on the resolution and on the reelection of the chair and the vice chair?
If they were to do that, it would not be, it would not have any effect either way. They can vote on it, but it would not, it would be more of a statement of intent. However, it would be improper to hold such an actual vote for a new chair and vice chair for the charter and Roberts' Rules of Order.
And I appreciate your opinion, Madam Counselor. However, it's well noted, and we will proceed.
Okay, you can, so, I believe we need to... Can you remind me who seconded the motion?
Councilman Harder.
Okay, so go ahead and read the resolution.
No, we didn't vote on the suspension of the rule. You stopped us. So I would like to vote on, we have a motion on the floor and a second. You need to call the rules, to suspend the rules.
I was going with what you were laying out before, Councilman Fitch, and you asked to read the resolution. But if you would like to suspend the rules first, we can. So go ahead and make your motion. We'll vote to suspend the rules.
I've already made the motion. It's already been seconded, so go ahead and take a vote.
In favor?
I'm in favor of the vote, aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
No.
Nay. Roll call, please.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days? Councilmember Dunaway?
No.
Councilmember Fitch? Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
No.
Councilmember Tracus?
No.
Councilmember Harder? Madam Chair, on the motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of adopting a resolution regarding election of council officers and for selecting a county council chair and vice chair for 2021, there are four ayes and three noes.
Motion carries.
Madam Clerk, please read the resolution.
Yes, sir. Resolution Number 4, introduced by Councilmember Fitch. Whereas Rochelle Walton Gray was elected to a term of office representing the people of District 4 on the St. Louis County Council, beginning on January 1, 2017, for a period of four years. And whereas, on January 5, 2021, Rochelle Walton Gray, a former St. Louis County Councilwoman, participated in a regularly-scheduled county council meeting, knowing her term of office had ended on December 31, 2020, at 11:59 p.m. And whereas, during the meeting, Rochelle Walton Gray knowingly voted on and sponsored multiple items of legislation after her term of office had expired. And whereas, Rochelle Walton Gray knowingly accepted salary and benefits from the taxpayers of St. Louis County after her term of office had expired. And whereas, the revised statutes of Missouri, Chapter 575.120, states, "A person commits the offense of false impersonation if such person, one, falsely represents himself or herself to be a public servant with the purpose to induce another to submit to his or her pretended official authority or to rely upon his..."
Correct.
Madam Clerk, if I interrupt, you're reading the resolution for the end of the agenda. This is the one calling for the the chair and the vice chair, the seats to be vacated.
So you need Resolution Number 5.
It starts, "Whereas the chair of the county council unlawfully seated..."
Okay, I apologize.
Sorry, I stopped you earlier.
The Resolution Number 5, introduced by Councilmember Fitch. Whereas the chair of the county council unlawfully seated former councilwoman Rochelle Walton Gray at the regular council meeting on January 5, 2021, after her term of office had expired. And whereas, former councilwoman Walton Gray voted on legislative items on January 5, 2021 in violation of the revised statutes of Missouri, the Charter of St. Louis County, and the Missouri Constitution. And whereas, former councilwoman Walton Gray unlawfully cast the tie-breaking vote for council chair and vice chair for 2021. And whereas, the council finds that former councilwoman Walton Gray was not qualified to participate in the meeting or vote on agenda items on January 5, 2021 per Charter Section 22.070, which states, quote, "The council shall be the judge of the qualifications of its members," end quote. And whereas, the council finds the 2021 chair and vice chair were unlawfully elected on January 5, 2021, and as such, are not qualified to act in those capacities. Now therefore, be it resolved by the county council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows. Section 1. The election of officers held on January 5, 2021 is hereby vacated, and the election of a presiding officer is ordered. Nominations for presiding officer will be accepted by any council member, properly seconded, and a vote taken by the administrative director. The presiding officer elected will serve in that capacity until election of the 2021 council chair and vice chair is held. Section 2. The council further finds that Bill 314, 2020, was improperly passed 4 to 3 on January 5, 2021, by counting the unlawful vote of former councilwoman Walton Gray. The council orders Bill 314, 2020, return to the council's final passage order of business where it last legally resided.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 5.
Second.
Second. Days.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
No.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days? Councilmember Dunaway?
No.
Councilmember Fitch? Councilmember Webb?
Madam Chair, may I make a statement before I cast my vote?
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Webb.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The issue of whether or not I have the right to vote for council leadership has been one that I did not ask to be a part of. Yet, we are here. It is disheartening that I'm placed in the middle of this situation that I did not ask to be in. The people of the 4th District elected me to represent them. They want my voice to be their voice, and they want me to fight for them. The amount of phone calls and emails and pop-up visits that I receive from my constituents regarding this issue is clear. It is a sign that they want their voices heard. To remain neutral or abstain from this such important vote will be unequivoc, excuse me. It will be equivalent of me remaining silent on the behalf, and that is something that I just cannot do. From the moment that this issue began, my position was clear. I should have the right to vote for the council leadership. I made my position public. I also sent my position to each member, current member on the council that are seated here today. I asked to be included in the vote, and it did not happen. Instead, my predecessor was allowed to cast a vote that should have been mine on the behalf of the people of District 4 who resoundingly elected me to be their leader. As I stated to the council and my correspondents, the county charter has several inconsistencies, but the length of a county member's term is clear. That has absolutely nothing to do with who I may vote for, but everything to do with the voices of the people in District 4 being silenced. The people of my community have a right to be heard, and it is my obligation to take their voice and their votes very seriously. My priorities will be with the people of the 4th District at all times, and it is my intention to fight for them as hard as I can. Therefore, I will be voting yes on this resolution.
Councilmember Clancy?
Nay.
Councilmember Tracus?
You're on mute.
Sorry about that, no.
Councilmember Harder? Madam Chair, on the motion to adopt Resolution Number 5, there are four ayes and three noes.
Madam Chair, in the absence of a chair, I move that we have a presiding officer, and I would like to nominate Tim Fitch to be the presiding officer at this time.
Second.
Councilwoman, and Councilman, the motion and the nomination are out of order. Our charter, I believe, in Section 2.050 is pretty clear that we do not nominate a presiding officer unless there is an absence or vacancy in the chair position. There is not.
There is. If you'd like to have that discussion after we vote, you can.
I think the motion is in order.[1670.62] I think the motion is in order.
There is no mechanism in our charter to remove a chair, nor in our charter, nor in Roberts rules, nor in our rules.
You are no longer the chair. So we have a motion on the floor.
That is not correct, Councilman Fitch. Your motion is not recognized.
You don't have that choice. Point of order.
Please state your point of order.
You are no longer the chair, so you have no standing to make that objection. You can make comments during the discussion period before we take a vote. There's been a motion for presiding officer. There's been a second. The next move is for a roll call by the clerk. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll for presiding officer.
No. Councilman Fitch, your motion is not recognized. What you are trying to do is illegal. You will not be moving forward in that manner. The chair position has not been vacated. I understand the resolution that you put forward, but it amounts to your opinion and the opinion of those who supported it and has no legal standing.
Madam Chair.
You've had your chance, Councilman Fitch, to make your case to the council and you have been for several weeks now. We will have another vote for chair and vice chair at the first meeting of the year in twenty twenty-two now.
I call the vote.
Likely have a different outcome, but for now, we need to focus on getting business done for the constituents of St. Louis County. It is time to move on from this.
You are outvoted. You are outvoted. As you said to me last August, you need to be able to counsel.
I will have to ask our staff to mute you if you continue disrupting the meeting.
You can't mute us because you no longer have a majority here. We have a majority of forty-three. You cannot give out orders.
Councilman Fitch? The vote is illegal. It is not in order.
I call for the question.
Councilman Fitch, we need to move on with our meeting.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. So the next one.
There is no standing for that action, Councilman Fitch.
The floor is now open for nominations for councilors for twenty twenty-one.
Chris, I, I need you to, to use the mute button at this time.
And I could just unmute it.
Councilman Fitch, why would you try to disrupt county business? We have a lot of items on our agenda tonight and we also have a public forum.
He is not disrupting. He is not disrupting.
We have a legal vote. We have a legal vote and a motion on the floor. It's time to vote on it, whether you like it or not.
Councilman Fitch, that is not in order.
I don't care. You're no longer the chair.
We have rules that are cited in our charter.
Call the question.
Call the question.
Call the question. Madam Clerk, please, please read the roll.
Councilman Fitch, I will not allow you to bully this council. I understand that you do not like some of the decisions that have been made, but they have been made according to the rules and according to our charter. And my job as chair is to uphold those. So we need to move on once and for all tonight, Councilman Fitch.
You've been outvoted. You've been outvoted.
The resolution's been passed.
The resolution, as I stated, has no legal standing. It amounts to your opinion. If you would like to litigate this issue, you need to take it up in another place and time.
You do not get to decide. Let's please have our vote.
Councilman Fitch, your action is not recognized. It is out of order.
You have no say in the matter. I have.
I am the chair of this council, Councilman Fitch. I run the meetings.
I have appealed it. Would another member like to second it?
Madam Clerk, can we please move on to bid openings?
No ma'am. We're not going to allow you to move on to bid opening. We have a motion on the floor. You cannot deny it. We've already, and, and you've ignored
Councilman Fitch, I will not allow you to bully this council. You may have been a bully as the police chief, but you will not bully this council.
Well, you just say it to one. You just roll the roll to two one.
Please proceed to bid openings. If Councilman Fitch continues to disrupt, then that speaks volumes at this point.
What will you do? We've made a motion. It's on the floor. You cannot ignore it.
Your motion is not recognized.
It doesn't matter. You can, you have no say in the matter. You're no longer the chair.
You don't have any more say than I do.
Again, Councilman Fitch?
What are you gonna do?
Let's have our vote. Four members of this council have asked for a vote.
I understand that, Councilman Fitch, but the charter, the charter is what we follow. Diane, can we please move on to bid openings? I apologize that Councilman Fitch is continuing to disrupt the meeting, but we need to move on.
You have been outvoted. You have been outvoted. You no longer have authority to call out any orders. No authority. You have no authority. Let's have our vote.
We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to adjourn.
So moved.
There's been a motion and a second to adjourn.
Councilman Fitch, why don't you just stop bullying the chair and let us get on with our business? You know, let me finish, sir. Let me finish.
You have your.
We received, we received a lengthy, comprehensive legal memorandum that clearly establishes your motion as, as unrecognizable. There's been no removal of the chair or vice chair. You're just being an obstructionist and I'm sick of it. Why don't you quit being a bully? Or if you choose to bully someone, bully someone who could push back, sir. We have enough of you. We have enough of you, sir.
There's a motion to adjourn.
You're a fool.
Take the motion.
It's a shame that we have to adjourn this meeting. There are people lined up to make comments. We have council business to attend to, but you know, I gladly go home and make time to put my kid in bed tonight. I would rather do that than put up with, with this nonsense and disruption, Councilman Fitch. So I will entertain the motion to adjourn. I'm glad that we got our housing assistance passed tonight. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned.